Yeah, if you could just do it.
Could we help me story to choose this?
It's actually a terrible idea.
Put it up.
Since going down Old Street this morning, there's somebody driving by coming this way and they had their phone up going like this through your yard.
It's almost, it's almost not sound.
Oh, I can imagine. I guess the place to go is Tuxell Street over Romeo.
Yeah.
That's supposed to be.
Used to be. Now it's north of.
Yeah, it's crazy. They've been over there last working over there when we were setting it up.
You know, it's trying to set a precedence, which is good because people across the street now, you know, it's cool when people take pride in this stuff.
Sounds like he's doing the ones that cross the street first.
My phone says it's seven o'clock. They called me and he's all right, but what's he? My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in a division where the liberty is justice for all. Alright, keep a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Move and second to approve the agenda on favor say aye.
Aye.
Poked. Uh, please report. We all got a.
Package.
In our package. Fire report. Dan, we got anything to tell us?
Alright, so for September, we had twenty-nine runs. Uh, thirteen Michael's, one in the village, six PIs, and ten fires. And break that down. It was one gas leak, which ended up not being a gas leak, just a strange odor. Um, one down wire, two smoke investigations, which I think we found nothing but the smoke. Then six fires, five which end up just being a false alarm. Couple of them could have been something that we went a little bit long with. Then we had one assist who appeared up at apartment on Sacko, on Sacko Street.
Thank you. Any commission or. Not here tonight. Why any commission to have anything?
Nope.
Okay.
We had a very quick meeting. We needed some money agenda, so activity go on.
Uh, DDA, do you want to talk now or down the park?
Well, I think they want to talk and then the council can talk down on the agenda.
Well, Jan, did I say anything yet?
Oh, I, I actually have it on call. So you guys can talk if you want.
Alright, well, just to let everybody know, since I'm sure you may or may not heard, we're just wanting to let you know that things are progressing, progressing with Metamor Community Park. And it's pretty exciting. Hopefully you guys all will feel the same way since it's been a little bit time coming. Um, there has been.
Talk?
Obviously for a long time and the way it's gonna be is, Leah's worked very hard on working with Seven Ponds. And Nick Holden and Leah have been working with getting things sent to get gravel play in there for the driveway parking lot. And some trees going up the approach, which will be nice to eventually make it look. Leadway to the signs, which Jan has worked very hard on with the company. And I think there's some across the street already that have been put up. And then twenty-four and the community park sign I think will probably be coming up next. If I'm not mistaken, so there you go. Just filling everybody in on where things are going. So that was all.
But we do also have it on our agenda.
Right, on agenda, well, about the property, go to the plan. During report, they're in the envelope. That's it. That's it. Council communication.
What are we doing on progressive of the lagoon work?
We got approved from the state for the sludge judging for renewable. Um, so now we are trying to coordinate with the company. There's a couple more tests that had to be done as far as the state. But we got our preliminary approval and now we're just waiting on the company to give us a date and come out and do it.
So we had to get the approval before they could even really give us a price to know what they were going to ask to do according to state regulations.
You do one, both, or?
I believe both, but you have to do it, time it right when they're draining down and obviously you can't do it when they're full, so.
That's crazy.
Um, we're just waiting on the company to get back to us on a final price and then they can do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I do have one R and L did call me yesterday. It'll be about two weeks before the ringers red that ditch out town along River of that, but it's kind of not too, about two weeks being able to be in here. Get it done, so finally. The other. Okay, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before we do that, we do have a change to the September fifteenth minutes. Mr. LaPlatter had wrapped it up. A change in the motion to, that we had done for the settling group. Um, I think my original motion had said that we were, um, the motion had stated that we were going to. Pull back the water agreement until well one was replaced and operational, at which time we'll reevaluate the situation. Um, I think he's handing out the, the words that he would like, but I'll go ahead and read it. He wants it to say that we're going to revoke the offer to settlement group and to enter into the part of the water purchase agreement. So the village is existing well number one replaced with a new well and the new well is operational, at which time the village council will reevaluate the situation. Um, but the person that had actually made the original motion isn't here.
That's okay. I mean, amending the minutes can be done by the council. Um, it just, it doesn't need to be done by vote at this current. And again, I think everybody knew. We're not saying anything different than what you guys were talking about and what everybody understood. It's just a little bit more formal language. Uh, just so that twenty years from now, if, when none of us are still here and thinking about it, it's, it's a little bit more formal. Uh, it's too exact the word difference being done here, so. Pullback could be interpreted a lot of different ways without people remembering what actually happened there, so. We're just suggesting the language being modified slightly.
Go to the near. Motion to.
Make a motion. We accept it as corrected.
And move and second to approve the agenda.
With that correction to the minute.
With the, yes, minute on favor say aye.
Aye.
Poked. For public time.
So, gosh, it's always like, where to start, where to start? I hope you all pay attention to the events in Grand Lake about three weeks ago. Uh, somebody I know very well was one of the first responders on the scene. And so I paid very close attention to everything that happened there. And I hope you think about our big festival and anything that happens out here in light of that. Because unfortunately, that can happen anywhere. We don't want that to happen, but it can. And I want to ask you if somebody pulled something out on the balloon launch field during the event, when there are thousands of people out there. And you've got egress blocked on multiple sides. That is why I am so upset with this council and why I'm so upset with the township for allowing it. Because ways that people could get themselves to safety are blocked. And they have steel rods in them and people could easily get hurt off of those, especially in a panic. That is why I care and that is why in about four weeks from now, when I'm not working ninety hours a week anymore. There'll be another video coming out because I got an awful lot of footage this year. Of all of the bad things that happened out there, unsafe things that all of you should have prevented. Again, that festival should never go on again without a fire marshal making sure that things are at least set up as safely as they can be for those thousands of people. And speaking of the festival, Mr. Clark, you know, yet again, last meeting, you know, they're talking about developing of the park, which thank goodness, after twelve years, more than twelve years, somebody's finally doing something out there. But you don't want a lot of done out there because you want it to be parking for the festival. When the other three hundred and sixty-three days a year, that can be such an asset to our community and you have been holding it back. And I don't think you should be sitting there. I think that is miserly. And I, and I, and I, I think about what could possibly be the motivation for someone. Because they want their friends at the Lions to be happy that there's all that parking and all those people can go to their beer tent and spend all that money over there and bringing a lot of money. When again, that could be a tremendous asset for our community. We all could have been using freely for all this time. Um, I want to note that the packet I gave you today, twelve instances, twelve different vehicles I spotted in Harmer Park, parked there, shouldn't be per the deed. But that's just this month and that's just what I caught when I drove by. And I've been telling you this for a long time. You are failing us. You are failing in your responsibility because the deed says it's not going to be used for parking. And now Mr. Danny said, well, maybe for recreational parking. No one was using it for recreational, so it was commercial parking, which is against the deed and against your duties here. Um, I also noticed in Harmer Park this month, a cycling event. Now I'm pro people coming and having events here. I really am. But when I FOIA the application for that, which went in June twelfth, it never came before this council for review. Um, there was no insurance on file for that event. How does this happen? How does this happen? What are the guidelines for that? There's a farmer's market out there, you know, in other places that would at least have to be permitted, inspected sometimes, given some guidelines. We don't have that going on here and it really is just baffling. And then sometimes we have a trailer parked out on our street out here, blocking the way for trucks on this trucking route. It's just, it's amazing. Uh, I do want to note that in your packets today, I saw two bids for that, it appeared to be bids for that gold building. One of them is by Dan Miller and, you know, I don't know if his work, he might be perfectly terrific, but he's on the planning commission with the township. I just think that should be noted, noting because we have such deep ties in between everybody. And by the way, John Clark, I hope you got your employment sorted out with the township because you've been mowing the lawn there and your own equipment as an employee. And that sure sounds to me like a contractor situation, so I hope you got that sorted out and consulted a lawyer about the proper, um, everything. So I'll get to the rest later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not all get on the unfinished business. What are being discussed?
So, uh, as the, as the council is aware, there has been some back and forth. Um, you know, again, the, last month, the council took the, made the decision to wait on finalizing things until such time as, as the well issues are resolved and addressed. Um, with that being said, there's still been some back and forth between the settlement group engineers and the village engineers. As to how the, the meter vault would be operated and some of the things back and forth. So there was some communication on that. Uh, tail end of last week and actually today, we got a response from, from Ryan Lee and that was communicated over to the settlement group engineers. So there is still communication going on there. Again, obviously, the village is not in a position to be able to finalize that until we get the well issues addressed. Uh, but there is still communication going on back and forth to try to get some of the details nailed down, uh, so that when the, when the well issues are addressed, I'll see what's going forward. If there's other questions, I'm happy to discuss it further, but that's, that's what we're having.
Okay. No question. I know we've been over enough different things. Well, number one.
I didn't hear anything from them today. I was hoping to get a email from them, but I just, did you hear from them today?
No, but I have been in contact with Dan Whalen from Wayne Works. And. They, they were putting it into, uh, on the building, kind of lining it up with Joel from Lions Weld Building. To get their contractor to come in and still take it, coordinate, link it together a little better. And I didn't get to meet with them, but I guess Friday they did meet up there, just with what, concrete guy?
Yeah.
So it's moving forward, but I hate to say it, but we're probably gonna have to have a special meeting.
We were hoping to have one before this meeting, right?
Well, if that's the case, we will.
Yeah.
Keep it rolling.
I, I have talked to a contractor and back up on, on our part where if we have to, we can step in and get it straightened out and done. But I kind of wanted it to be in the. Weld Building flat because then they couldn't blame us for tying them up or holding them up and getting the weld up.
You mean the demolition of the buildings.
Right, the building and rebuilding it and, you know, so.
So I'll be in there once.
So.
Tear it down and build it. Put a new one in.
And like I said, I hate doing it, but probably gonna have a special meeting to approve their prices, so. Other than that, I don't have nothing on it really.
It won't get done if we don't do it.
Okay. Unfinished business. Public time policy.
Well, last month I had provided you guys with our, I guess, current policy of record, the one from nineteen seventy-six that I had found. Um, in the minutes that we haven't been following. Two thousand seventeen, I changed it to where we had two public times. Times with the intent of the first public time being for agenda items and then the second one being anything else besides agenda items. Because that's what, I talked to other clerks at one of my conferences and that's what some of them do. Um, I think we're the only one as far as county, in the county, villages and townships that do the two public times. But that was the intent. And then in two thousand, I think it was twenty-one, Mr. Danny had us change it from, um, three minutes to five minutes. Again, we weren't done by policy, so technically we haven't been running off our old existing policy. So last month I had drafted up a new one and I know I gave it to the council and everybody and Mr. Danny had a couple of changes to it this month. Um, so before you is the proposed public time policy. That I know your office worked on and I worked on. Mr. Danny had a couple of little changes that I made and this is the one he presented, he presented, you know, you guys did. Um, I do have a question though. If we take this public time policy, are we having one public time or are we going back to the one or are we doing the two?
So this, I mean, this is drafted from the mindset of right now you have two public times. If you want to change your agenda up and have four public times, you can do that. I don't necessarily recommend it, but it's a, it's a possibility. Um, but this, the way this is drafted, it just says during each public time and it, it lays out what the rules are for each public time. So if you want to continue having two, you can. If the council decides, you know what, we want to change the agenda and we want to slim that down or, or make modifications, you can. Uh, but this, this policy would just apply for each public time, whether that's one, two, three, whatever the, whatever the council decides to put on the agenda.
Questions, James? Motion?
We don't have a problem. We've been.
Come here and front him in the two.
No, but when I originally had done the two, I, my, my intention was when we first started it. But the first public time that is before the agenda items is for people in the public can speak on agenda items. That way, because our, all of our old public time before that was always after the agenda items. And it didn't give people in the public a chance to speak about agenda items until after the fact, after we made motion and acted on it.
You know, I think that you have one before we, you know, clean it through today.
Right.
But I don't know what they need one for afterwards. It's all done, but, you know.
So I mean, we could do just one and have it be for, I mean, it's up to you guys. I just need some kind of direction and approve the policy.
Was it back in seventy-six?
One. Just one. Yeah.
What's it gonna hurt? You know what? And make a motion, we go to one?
It's gonna be a three-minute or a five-minute.
Well, our policy here stinks in a minute.
Okay.
So you're making a motion to do one public time?
Yep.
Good. Got that. Does this mean?
And then are you approving the policy along with that motion or is that two separate motions?
I mean, it depends. I guess my preference would be to see that in two separate motions. Um, because your, your motion that we're talking about right now is really more just altering how the council is directing clerk to prepare the agenda, which is fine. Um, and once you decide how you want, do you want one or two, then I think you should have a conversation about, uh, the public time policy and how long you want that, that time to be, uh, for time. But like I said, you've got a, a motion on the floor, uh, right now for altering the agenda to indicate one public time from. I, I don't want to extrapolate too much. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but am I correct in assuming that you thought would be to have the public time at the beginning of the meeting, uh, and not have the one at the end of the meeting would be what you.
Correct.
So before then.
So before.
So moving second.
The move and second to have only one public time before the agenda item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poked. Curried. Now we need motion to.
Accept, accept this.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept, accept the new public time policy.
I'll second it.
The move and second to accept the new public time policy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And this will go into effect next month. It's not going to change.
Right, not good, I can't get it.
No, no.
Okay. Now. New business. Park property.
Yeah, so we decided to, everybody's got a drawing on there. Um, I stand corrected. I know I said that we were going over, um, for the flower garden. We decided to put it on hold. And it was, um, more where the picture was. It was not to that issue. Um, this is the drawing of what they're looking at doing. Um, they, the second one actually shows you. Um, trees. Um, just basically landscaping they wanted to do around the parking. So we technically already approved this first addition, this first drawing, the engineer drawing, um, from Row back in August, I think of twenty-four.
Yes.
Um, so we did approve that. So we already approved with the driveway, I think.
I have a quick question. Yeah, I know. I noticed that today.
Is the driveway going on the right or left side of the sign? I mean, it's just in the drawing, I mean, this one's on the right side of the driveway and this side is on the left side, so I'm curious.
Do you have a, it's, it's on the northern driveway.
It's a northern driveway. I don't know where the sign's going.
So it's actually gonna go over by the bowl.
The driveway? It's right where the two-track is already heading up.
It's a northern.
There's two driveways there.
It's a northern one.
A north and a south. It's the north and then it piers off.
Okay.
And. Um, the, yeah, it's, it's the.
Northern driveway.
Okay. Because it, I didn't catch this at first, but, um, so this drawing here. And this drawing are two separate. They're two different ones. Yes, they are. So this is actually what the council wanted. Is that what I brought to the DDA? So my apologies on that. I brought the preliminary Row. So that was the first one and then we switched it when we met with Row. We moved it to the northern driveway. And at the DDA meeting, that was, I did apologize for bringing the wrong draft picture, but yes, it would be the northern driveway going up. The landscaping would be like five trees on each side. Um, you still have the pavilion site if that ever, if that moves forward at some point. And then the garden that would, did talk about, I did talk with Seven Ponds about putting these gardens was more centered. The basketball courts at Lions, it was due south of that, so right about there. But I did understand there might be some concerns about having it there, so I've also recontacted Seven Ponds. And they're very willing and able to modify the gardens to work in the bowl area. The garden is on hold, as Janet said, until spring. It, obviously, it's not good timing to put a garden anyways. So akin to the bowl, it's no issue at all. Perfect timing for planting of trees though and putting in gravel driveway in a perfect way. Okay, so I guess.
So basically you want approval.
Yes.
Because it's not a fact from what we.
Not right. Yes, but then we run into the problem of the power. Because it would be over here. Power, water is now it's over here.
Here.
I, I.
Southern corner. Southern corner of the street.
But it's not. This has it going over towards the bowl.
Where the power and water sort of is going to the south end of the problem.
Yeah, originally I thought that was the DDA wanted to do. They knew.
That's what I thought we were, I didn't realize this until I seen a sign thing here and I was like, wait a second. Is this the same steps that you've given them on? Yeah. Yeah, so this was written, drawn up by the landscaper. Who.
No, no, I think at the meeting, if I'm not mistaken, the village DPW discussed it with the village president about where the, those items were at. Did we talk about that?
We talked about water being able to work there and that everything would be able to work.
Again, the whole thing.
Water and power can.
Yeah, the whole thing with the DDA is not to, not to keep dragging things down.
No, we're working hard for the past year and a half that I was in other state committee. To try and develop this property. In my mind, what I joined on was to keep it as natural and beautiful as Metamor is, not clog it up with. Stuff that doesn't really fit this community, but enhance it. And then when Seven Ponds came aboard, it was like, we could run programs out of there. We could have. Such a great thing for the community, but it still keeps it open, usable for Metamor days, which is.
Yeah.
So again, not, not to.
The only one we do the year.
Well, well, not to take away from what, you know, you guys are saying, we altered it. We're not trying to alter anything from the DDA. From my whole purpose of being out of DDA is to work cohesively with the village board. And I think we're doing that, so that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
So I was looking to get approval for, um, because like I said, we had approval for the drawings. So would we need two approvals then? For the change?
I didn't give them permission to move forward with it. Really.
So on this picture, can ask, where's the bowl on this picture?
Right here would be your bowl.
Right here.
It's on the edge of the bowl. Right, because the lions would be here. So here's the bowl. And here's that first driveway and the second driveway is over here by that tree that sits there, you know, the big tree. So here would take the gravel driveway up and around to like a fifty-spot parking lot, which will be all gravel, have gravel. And then here, we're discussing putting sycamore trees along here, five on each side and a couple clusters of pines. And that's really it. Um, the excavator said you don't need two large boulders to put one on each side of the parking lot. And then, you know, it can just be, we can see what kind of interest it draws people in. It makes it still none more countryside, but beautified by a few more trees. Oh, and also the sign that Janet had done will be landscape. I think that was already approved possibly. Yeah.
I, I'm.
So, and that will be right there. So the sign, this is the sign. Got a few white pines, few sycamores. Yeah, they're, he put what they all are, Norway screws or pine over here. So it's not a tremendous amount.
Well, it's like twenty years and a lot of people are gonna hate to be put all these pines in there and they become a mess.
Well, kind of.
They look nice when they're small, but.
Well, as long as they're maintained.
They're like kids. They grow up.
Yeah, right. So, yeah.
That's mildly the term, but, you know.
Basically, we're just looking for approval to move forward, right?
So I'd say, yeah, we've already given the approval we want to do, you know.
Can I just say something? I, the driveway got changed. I mean, why is there a driveway down the north? I was just thinking it was the south. Yeah, so did you notice?
Yeah, from my understanding, because of the, the elevation changes, the washout is gonna be a lot worse on the south.
Right, it's, it's more of a, and going to, sorry for buttoning in, but going, going to the, the north driveway, you're also getting some of the runoff to naturally. Run towards the bowl that's already there. Instead of running down the big driveway, washing it out, toss one. And then having to run down the edge of the road to hit the manhole drain to end up into the bowl anyway.
Let, let nature kind of take its course from the engineering and common sense landscaping standpoint. That, that's my.
So will there be water access then to water, everything that we're putting in? Yes, isn't that what we discussed?
Well, I, I think at, I think at first, it's gonna be a lot of DPW watering.
With a tank or something?
So, you know, I, I don't know that part of it, but yes.
I mean, because when they're first being established.
Yeah, well, that's why this time of year is probably way better.
There was some discussion that to see how much use and what the public's gonna be and maybe putting bathrooms in in the future. That's why we want to make sure that. How much use and what the public's gonna be and maybe putting bathrooms in in the future. That's why we wanna make sure that the water and sewer is great.
But even, even maybe some frost-free hydrants.
Right.
For the watering of the landscaping.
There is actually two water mains right there. One used to go back to the, the old riding arena that's burnt out.
Did you locate those water line mains going through there?
What?
Did you locate the water mains going through that area or on the southern side?
Uh, when, when it was shut off, yeah.
Oh, I thought there, where's the eight inch going, going, coming out? On the driveway? Do you recall?
Going up to the house that was actually south of the south driveway. Been through there. We're both on work.
I thought you were talking a while back where the eight inch mains came through.
I, I don't know where that. Comes down through. We're gonna have to actually double check.
I'll have to call.
With Ryan Lee and find out where the, you know, if we have any water mains coming down from the wellhouse down through that area.
Cause they have to get to the well.
I don't think we would have back then because we didn't, we didn't own the property.
Correct, so probably comes down the driveway.
Probably comes down the driveway, but we need to just quick double check to make sure there's not definitely.
Pull prints off of them, look at the S buildings.
You know, yeah.
Well, and then there was some questions. I know some of you had questions about possibly having it, um, a land leveling done before.
Land balance.
Land balance, thank you. Before we started. The process.
Take some of the hills out of there and put them in the low spots. So you're, you're not parking on a grade like this. So you have somebody committed who just balanced the grade. Where it's, it's a lot flatter. And we'll gain parking spots by using that.
And then.
Because we'll be taking some of the hill area.
Well, can I?
And putting it into the lower areas.
Let me know when I can speak on that.
Go, Bill.
That's what the excavator's going to do. It, it's going to be shacked to grade level and, you know, water flowing around. Any extra dirt if there's there is going to be spread out and so it, it's gonna be done professionally and he, he, the excavator's, like I said, donating a lot of his time and material as well.
So a question for you, Bill. Is he doing just that area for the parking lot or, I'm not sure.
As far as.
Or is he doing, um, that whole field there?
No, as far as I know, just the driveway and the parking area.
That's what, that's what Lloyd was talking about, is having the hole because it, it rolls.
Well, I'm sure at one time, but how far in advance would we want to get right now? We're talking about these specific spots be leveled to park, right? Not necessarily for the.
Now's the time to do it.
Hey, we're on board. I'm just saying.
Because Jen and I went down there and walked it. There's a lot of this.
Sure.
That's rolling, he's rolling.
Of course, there's a swale in there.
Yeah.
That could be, if, when they cut the hill and start balancing out. That swale could be filled. That could be picked up as more space to park.
Well, it, it, it could and my point with us being here is we can, do we wait for another meeting? Then wait for another DDA meeting, then wait, you know, we're losing time here. I could be brought up. I could make one call to.
That land balancing, I think you get, get done after the fact, once they get. But even, even some of the excess dirt that they have from there could end up going into that hole.
And that's what the talk was. And, and the person that is going to be doing it is pretty schooled in that sort of thing.
But, you know, be honest with you, that, that pit that I'm talking about, not to, not to hold the bowl, but, you know, where all the water runs. Kind of a hazard. Kids on a bike, motorbike, it needs to get filled in.
There's a scrub pit back there, scrub trees, so.
That, the excess could be put in that swale.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll do what the law says.
Bring that back up to ten more parking spots.
Yeah, it would actually make that whole, the only place you would have is one bowl and then it's almost. Like what Lloyd was saying when he was showing me.
Yeah.
But actually, John, you've seen it too. If it's done properly.
Well, of course, I.
It's all, it's almost, I don't wanna say it's level, but it makes that whole field, you know, you've driven up there. It's kind of a.
Well, they're gonna, they'll still have a nice rolling.
It don't have.
Yeah, the rolling is nice.
It'll have you a nice roll, but it'll be lower.
So again, my point is, like I said, I'm sure that all will work out great, but do we wanna wait for council approval of that? I don't know. I don't, I'm just letting you know from the DDA standpoint.
I think we should go with John's idea. Get yours started. And then.
Address, rather than.
Address, address the, uh, land balance margins.
First of all, cause they might fill some of that in.
Correct, right, they might, they might help us out that way.
That way, yeah, and we could just ask that he does, you know, he's out.
He's, in my opinion, he's.
He's gonna go where to lose it when he sees it.
He's not gonna do something half-butted. That's just, you know.
Right.
So do we need a motion for approval or are we just consensus?
I mean, I'm, I would suggest, given that there are some differences from what you considered last time, I would suggest it would be a good idea if the council wants to approve. This with the, the northern driveway being used, to go ahead and have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. We follow this plan right here as presented.
Using the northern driveway.
Using the northern driveway, cause again, it, it makes sense. It'll pull up.
And you're fine with the landscaping?
Yeah, it'll, it'll drain out, but again, the, the pine trees.
Yes.
So we, we can hold off on that. It doesn't matter, but.
I.
Time to get something going.
Right.
I mean, as long as pines, from my understanding, as long as they're not.
Time to break ground.
That's time to go.
Make it work, make it work.
Right, we have thirty seconds.
Move and seconded to move forward with the. Parking pavilion, uh.
Not pavilion, the parking lot and driveway in my second.
Parking lot and driveway, okay, yeah, yeah.
If I can make.
Towns community park. Go ahead.
So if we use a northern driveway and you know when lights come out, it'll be northern lights.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Just gotta make sure it's on paper.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carry. Get your shovel out, start breaking ground.
Very good.
Okay, salt bury.
Okay.
We've, we've discussed this some.
We've discussed.
For a couple, three years and never done nothing.
Quite a few years, back and forth kind of discussions. Um, and it was on our capital improvement plan as one of our projects that we wanna get done. Um. I know Nick, the DPW, had met with this, um, clear heights construction. Um, they gave us a quote, it's, it's a year old. So it's old, so it's probably went up since then. Um. But their quote was eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty. But they were using the, the steel hoop and the, the fabric for a roof. Um, and then we do have another quote from Metamor Building and Development and they are proposing with, um.
Hall construction.
Yes, pool construction and. Concrete floor, the concrete walls, everything like that. Um. Their estimate is fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight and twenty cents. I don't know the twenty cents came into it, but, um. This obviously is something we've been talking about. We do pay salt storage now. Um, we store off-site, um.
Then you have to chase after it.
Some, and we use their equipment to load it, so. Our tractor probably wouldn't have, that's the only downfall is our tractor wouldn't load, I don't think.
Your tractor will load the spreader that they use.
It will? Okay.
It just probably won't be as fast as.
Okay, I haven't talked to him and not, you know, sat down. I have talked to Walt, the current guy that does our streets and. Talked to him a little bit about it last year when I was kind of trying to start.
They, they were talking about the bucket being too, too wide, but, uh. If they scoop it right and only scoop it in one corner of the bucket.
Okay.
It's not gonna be an issue. That, or that's got a detachable bucket. We might have to look into buying a different bucket for the tractor.
Um. But it might not, I mean, depends on the weather. If we were to move forward today, it may get done this year. It may be spring.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have it lined up to store our salt. Like we always have, off-site, um. But what is? Couple of thoughts.
We can move forward on it and get part of our capital improvement and like that we've discussed it, I don't know how many years.
Let's wait to vote. I'll make a motion.
In the long run, it's gonna cost money now.
It's already gonna go up. It's already gonna go up. There's no surprise.
So what did you say, Lloyd? I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion that we proceed on this with Metamor Building and Development, please. Let's make it, I'm getting a little hungry going through this.
We've talked about it, I mean, going back all the, my first year here, when Jen Sweeney was still president, we talked about it. About storing our own salts. I mean, we've been talking about it for twenty-three years, so.
Well, he's gotta go like, what, a couple miles on his way to go get it.
Yeah.
And then come back and it's just easier for him.
Who wasn't the seconded? I'm sorry.
There.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, if we move the seconded, move forward with our own salt storage and go with Metamor Building and Development. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carry. Okay. One more public time.
I gotta say, it's really interesting hearing like planning for a park being done around parking for two days a year. I just don't even think that should come into play. Yes, there should be an area that is set aside for handicap parking there. Everyone else can be bust in, so we can enjoy that park. To the most, three hundred and sixty-three days a year. So I just wish you would all rethink that. Just like, why are we changing? I liked the plan of having the landscaping up near the parking area, but now we gotta put it back down in the bowl, cause John Clark didn't like that one. But if it goes back down in the bowl, as you guys just voted for it, now we lose sledding hill, okay? And I guess that that's not a huge sledding hill, but when I was a kid, that was a big one to me and I was lucky enough. That while my mom was making dinner, I could go to the neighbor's house and sled on a hill, even smaller than that. We have so many hours of fun and just, so as this winter progresses. And you drive by that area, look at how many people are out there sledding. And then now we're changing that because John Clark didn't like. Losing, potentially losing parking spots for two days a year. I just, I think that's kind of crazy. Um, so apparently on October sixth, there was a meeting, um, an informational meeting about a drainage issue. But only certain people were invited, but other people weren't in this village, even though potentially it could, you know, impact us all money-wise and everything else and. That's what I heard when I was at the planning commission. So, you know, it'd have been nice to, if that information was spread. And speaking of the planning commission, I gotta say, this is the second meeting I've been to where a planning commission. Uh, member talked about doing some illegal stuff joyfully. Talked about missing the days when he could just drive. An off-road vehicle from here all the way over to M twenty-four while he was driving across private property. I've talked to. At least one of the owners of that property absolutely hated that people were doing that. That was illegal. The thing is, when you have people, any, and I brought this up before, you've got people making decisions. On a government level, on our behalf, but they're talking about joyfully doing things that are not legal or they're not aware of the laws that apply to them. Blissfully, happily, you know, ignorant of that. I mean, this, these are all, these are on, you know, in perpetuity here on, on YouTube. And planning commissions, townships, all kinds of municipalities, it's become significant in this county that they're getting sued. Mayfield got sued, Oregon Township got sued. Um, so the things they say, the lawyers are gonna go back and look at, how does this planning commission acting? So maybe think about when you're appointing people, are these people who are actually suited to be in this position? Are they people who respect the rule of law? Um, so, uh, you know, eighteen months and we still don't have that dredging done? Like, how long does it take around here? But I mean, we're at nine plus years on the water agreement, so I guess that's just how it goes. Um. Oh, I didn't ask about the Lyons. I, you know, I've asked about this before and not gotten any information. The Lyons shut down the intersection this weekend. You know, they got stuff in the middle of the road. That never comes before here gets approved or anything like that. It just happens. Um, it is, you know, I get it, but it's, it's also a hazard, so it should be approved by the council. Um, and I, you know, I just really get confused sometimes about Tina's role here. She's drafting a public time policy. She decides, I guess, what, what events happen here and don't, but then she's out of town when the big festival happens. She has no responsibility for that. I just really get confused and it seems like there are no guidelines for a lot of these things, so. And don't worry, I mean, I won't have ten minutes next month. I can be really efficient. I, I, I'm trained at the township on that and then I can go make videos with whatever else I was gonna say. And those reach much farther. It's way too much farther. I mean, it's reached hundreds more people or potentially more. So let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. One more public time.
Anyway. I just wanna say, like I said before, I said it at the township, I said it here at the village, I do appreciate what the board does. In my time on being on the DDA and attending more and more meetings, I think more and more positive things are being done in our area. I just wanna thank you guys for doing what you do. Um, obviously, we're not a grandland. We're not a metro park. We're not all these other places. We're Metamor. We're on a very slim budget and I really appreciate everything that everybody does. And the minute I have to stop worrying about what I say out in public, maybe it's time, uh, you know, we don't have that beautiful flag hanging anymore. It's just my own opinion. Thanks, guys.
You. And the other public time. Not, and I'll entertain one more motion.
I'll make that motion too.
Is there any that you haven't done this?
I was ready for it. I figured he might have something to add to.
Cause there is, I get to that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
And we're, we're not gonna do it during.
Are you, Lord?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Quickly adjourned. Can't figure that one out.
Hi, council, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, man. Go Lyons.